So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing non-lawary to poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening. How is everyone tonight?
We're doing pretty good, I think.
Awesome. I'm going to start with a personnel update and I would like to just start by recognizing an employee that just passed away. Cory Olson was one of our counselors over at the middle school and I wanted to let you know that we have been dealing with that in the schools and we have had some counselors on site for our students and notification has gone home to families and we've had EAP, we've relied on our employee assistance program to have counselors available to our staff. In Cory's memory, I just asked that we sort of take a moment. She will be missed, but we will be planning some sort of memorial service for her after school in the springtime and I wanted to start with that, unfortunately. I have some good news, that we have hired Deborah Dempsey as our special education star teacher over at Webster Middle School. We have also hired Jen Gulen over at the adult education as the lead advisor. We do have, for a very short term, Mr. Sean Gilrain with us, filling in as the assistant principal at the Webster Middle School. That will be a very short-term position, I did want to let you know about that. We have also hired David Podolsky as the grade five teacher over at the Webster Middle School and we have received the resignation of Sarah Connors over at Park Ave Elementary School. She will be resigning on December 5th. Tonight, I've asked Leslie Baker to come and share with you a little bit of the adult education program review process. We had the Department of Education in last week and Leslie's going to give a couple updates on the FY '20 corrective action plan that we have in place for the Webster Adult Education Linkage Program.
Good evening. Last Thursday, we had a visit by our funder, which is the Adult and Community Learning Services Division of Department of Education. They brought an eight-member team out to visit us and they toured three of our sites. They arrived at noon time and left us at about 9:00 PM. So they came to our daytime program, which is run at the Webster Public Library, and then they came to our Webster evening site and our Southbridge evening site. The purpose of this is to really take a deep look at our programming. Department of Ed has been charged with visiting all programs each year in the funding cycle. So sites will either receive a site visit or a program quality review and our number was up for the program quality review. We had teams go in and observe the classrooms. I had to prepare copious amounts. All of our curriculum, all of our scope and sequence, unit plans were submitted to them ahead of time. They wanted lesson plans for that day, so they knew what to expect when they went into the classroom and they conducted observations in most of the classrooms. They also interviewed all of our teachers, all of our leadership team and teams of students from each location, so that they could get a varied snapshot. They did acknowledge that it is a snapshot and they realized that not everything can be captured in that day. However, at the end, we had a debrief for about half an hour and we got some nice pieces of information. They let us know that they felt that our career pathways, collaborations were very strong. That's one of the major charges for our program and myself and the lead advisor spent a lot of time collaborating with our WEOA partners in the region, so different agencies for referrals, DTA, mass rehab, unemployment, all those agencies. We also sit on subcommittees and I sit on the regional workforce board, so they were very pleased with all of that. The other strong, strong highlight that they emphasized repeatedly was that our leadership was strong, both within our program and within the district. They were very pleased that Dr. Gogan was able to sit in on our interview of the administrative team and that we are included so seamlessly in the Webster Public School system. That's not something that they see everywhere. So that was exciting. They had a little, a couple of suggestions of areas for improvement. Ironically, one of them was digital literacy. If you recall back in the spring when they came out, they weren't impressed with how much digital literacy we were doing. So apparently, we're still struggling to find the sweet spot in that. But they did acknowledge that their definition of that is also evolving and changing, so we're kind of trying to catch up with that. The other suggestion was that our students that are in our off-site locations weren't 100% clear on what to do in the case of an emergency. Essentially, their answer was, "I'm going to get out the door." So they want it to be a little bit more formalized, so we're going to tighten that up. The last thing that they gave us was another positive and that was that the feedback that we're giving the instructors when we do the walkthroughs and observations is meaningful and it's positively impacting their practice. So that was a great compliment to the efforts of my leadership team and all the work that they've done. We've started with this change since late February, early March, when we had our site visit experience and we were heartened to get that feedback on Thursday night. So it will be another eight to 12 weeks before we get a formal report draft from them. At that point, it'll come to us for factual correction only and then the final report will be sent to the district when it's complete. All in all, it was a good experience, very different from last spring. It's great.
Any questions or comments for Leslie? Let me just, once again, on behalf of the committee, thank you and your team. I think you guys are kind of unsung heroes in our district because we don't always know exactly what's going on because you're very busy and it happens to be on Tuesday nights. But every time you come to us, I'm reminded of what a valuable impact you guys have, not only here in Webster, but within southern Worcester County. So it appears, based on the initial findings, that the state agrees with that.
It appears.
So, thank you very much for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Nice job, Leslie. Continuing on with my report, I had mentioned that our partnership with MAFRA has led to a connection with the Best Buddies organization. So Mr. Thomas and myself had a meeting and we are pleased to report that three of our students from the 18 to 22-year-old will be participating in the Best Buddies Mentor Program on October 30th over at MAFRA. We are also looking to hopefully start some Best Buddies chapters at all three of our schools. I've been talking directly with some of our substantially separate teachers and they are excited and interested in that, in starting that up. So that's good news. On other updates, our partnership with Boston Children's Hospital. Oh, I skipped that, thank you.
Good thing.
It's been a long day. It's been a long day. I'll go backwards. Central Mass Collaborative, I just wanted to give you an update. I'm very pleased with the new executive director, Susan Farrell. She has come in and there's been a very successful start of a new year over at the collaborative. She's very much taking a program-based approach and looking at their resources. She's focusing on safety and program development and reallocating resources in a very wise way and sharing that information with the board. Currently, we have two students there. We are looking to send more students there now that some of the programming is being updated. Just as an update, you know that Oxford joined the collaborative. The Department of Education has been looking over the new agreement with the new fee structure. We have not gotten feedback yet from the department. They were supposed to be meeting with the director next week, so I will be keeping you informed on any information on that new collaborative agreement. It will come to you actually when, once it is approved from the Department of Ed to be re-agreed upon at each of the school committees, the three now. Other updates, our partnership with MAFRA, as you know, led to the Boston Children's Hospital partnership with the injury specialist Barbara DiGirolamo and she has conducted safety assemblies this past week over at the Webster Middle School. I want to thank MAFRA publicly for connecting us. I'd like to let you know that building administrators are working with their ILT teams and teachers on MCAS analysis and when they are done dissecting the MCAS analysis in each building, we'll be putting together a presentation. We will be bringing that forward as a united group to you. We have ongoing curriculum coaching going on in all of our buildings. We have a new social studies pilot and people from McGraw-Hill coming in. We have McGraw-Hill coming in and working with our teachers during their CPT time over at Park Ave on wonders and we also have Looney coming in across the district, more in a coaching capacity, getting into the classrooms and working one-on-one with the teachers. That's ongoing. I would also like to let you know that Mrs. Barris held a special education parent group meeting here on October 16th to discuss organizing and helping the CPAC get reorganized. No CPAC meetings have been scheduled yet, they need to be scheduled. We're trying to get that up and running and we are requesting and seeking any parents who want to be on that to be on that with us. I'd also like to let you know that the Student Opportunity Act is in front of our legislators and that act is, would provide additional fundings for districts like us. And the WEA teachers met and all signed letters to Representative McKenna and so there's a united push for support for that act to be passed. We have had a very busy week. I know we were at town meeting last night, but Chad Hymus has been in our schools and I'm sure Logan's going to speak a little bit about that, but today I was at the middle school and Mr. Hymus was there and tomorrow he's going to the elementary school. I will say that his presentations to the students that I was a part of today were extremely powerful, extremely powerful. He has passed out, or will be passing out to all of the kids, free access to his story and movies, so if you want to take one and pass it down, you can also find out more about him on that. Just upcoming other events, we have some National Honor Society events happening tomorrow night at the Webster Middle School. The Junior National Honor Society will be occurring and then on Thursday night over at the high school. And as a quick snapshot, the town meeting last night, the additional funds, chapter 70 funds were approved into the budget of the town. It's not on our agenda tonight, it will be on the next agenda. The additional funds, we'll have to have you update our budget number for FY '20. The boiler funds were approved and the acceptance of the grant to accept reimbursement for foster care was also approved at the town meeting last night. And it's October and it's been a very busy beginning of the year and we are in the beginning phases of discussing, beginning to discuss FY '21 budget. We will be meeting with our district leadership team tomorrow and the process will begin. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Dr. Gogan? Let me just take a moment and on behalf of the entire committee, offer our condolences to Mrs. Olson and especially her family, her husband Oscar and her beautiful little girl. I did get to see some pictures of her this weekend. Unfortunately, I never had the opportunity to personally meet Cory. Over the years, I've only heard wonderful things about her ability to help kids, kind of a, you know, a tough-love type role as the guidance counselor and social adjustment counselor at the middle school. But I've heard a tremendous amount of feedback just recently since her passing from both parents and students, not only at the middle school, but here at Bartlett, because so many of the kids here at Bartlett, obviously, were affected by her assistance. And I was reading some of the comments that the kids were offering and it's, I think in life, you're never quite sure. I know, it's funny, Mrs. Blithe and I had the opportunity to see Chad last night briefly. We had to leave unfortunately for that town meeting event we had to attend. And he was talking about her passing and how, I think we all question sometimes, what kind of impact? And I'm sure people in education have very, very difficult jobs and there's tremendous stress and it's not easy, but to see the comments by the kids and to know, you know, what a positive impact she had on them, I was very moved by that. As a matter of fact, somebody was sharing with me last night how much she helped her daughter at the middle school. So I know she will be missed. Also, please know that our thoughts are with the staff and especially the students, as it's a very difficult time to lose anybody, but especially someone who is so talented and young, so we do offer our condolences. Unless Mrs. Perangeli and Mr. Thomas object, Logan, I'm sure, is very busy with academics and athletics. He claims he is, I'm not sure if that's true, but, unless the members object, I'm just going to skip down to item four, student update. Logan Peranto, good evening, Logan.
Good evening. I'd like to start by talking about how the PSATs were held on October 16th for juniors and sophomores. There was an assembly held. Chad Hymus came in and he talked about battling through adversity and keeping your mindset on your goals. For school clubs, our DECA club, each member was handed a practice test in order to prepare for their upcoming competitions. The next upcoming competition will be at Nichols College. For athletics, the golf team had matches against Quabog, Oxford, Bay Path and all of the Swickel Golf Teams in the conference tournament. The boys and girls soccer teams had games against Quabog, Southbridge and Oxford. The boys soccer teams specifically also had games against BMR and Quabog. The boys and girls cross-country teams had meets against Oxford, Millbury, Auburn, Tintasqua and all of the Swickel cross-country teams in the conference tournament. The volleyball team had games against Millbury and Bay Path. The football team had games against Lester and Oxford. There was a W over Oxford.
Not that anyone's asking.
The, for NHS, the new NHS inductees have been selected and the induction ceremony will be held this Thursday, October 24th. The student council, for student council, they ran Homecoming Spirit Week, which included Class Color Day, Tacky Tourist Day, Sports Day and Green and White Day. Also, the student council also conducted the Homecoming Dance, which was a great time for all in attendance.
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. First of all, good luck with your academics for the rest of this week, but also good luck on Saturday against Quabog.
All right, thank you.
Continuing with the superintendent's report, the next item is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As Dr. Gogan has said, budget time is quickly coming up and it is my favorite time of year, so I know everybody's excited for that.
We have fun.
We do enjoy it and it's good conversation to have because when you're putting your budget together, you're really getting into the nitty-gritty of your foundation, your core. What's your school about and what direction are you going? And it's your time to change. It's your time to adapt to different programs if needed, so it's a good practice to go through and it's something that I do enjoy working through with the team. In front of you, you should have a copy of our FY '21 budget calendar. This is a tentative, ongoing, living, breathing document, so it can change as things move through. I'm not going to read all of the dates, but as you can see, we do start tomorrow with the district team and a brief overview of how we're going to proceed through the budgets and then we're going to start with our department meetings. We'll meet with each school's individually to go over their budget individually. We'll meet with curriculum, we'll do some facilities district and technology stuff and then we'll compile it all into one budget and take a look at it as a whole and talk about programming and meet and have those collaborative meetings as we work through. You can see that we will be bringing the budget to you in January, as typical. And we'll work through, through the end of February and during that time, we'll be having joint meetings in December with the selectmen. We have one planned and I didn't put any meetings in yet for Board of Selectmen or Finance. As we get closer, we'll see what, you know, what they want to do there. Last year, the Board of Selectmen didn't want us to come down. We've met enough that they knew the budget, they were comfortable with the town administrator and our teamwork together, so they didn't feel a need to hear that. But our doors are open, as always, as we talk about it and people have questions, you know, please pick up the phone, please ask if there's something you want to know. I'd rather talk to you about it than trying to guess. So we will be starting that tomorrow and we will keep you up to date as we move forward with that. Any questions? Any dates that I missed? It's pretty hard typing 20 all over and then 21 in the budget. We're getting there, time's fine. Next item is the end-of-year financial report. As stated at the last meeting, I did submit this report on Thursday of last week. I included the entire report in your packet and I know you can't wait to go through every schedule, so I'm going to start with line one out of like a thousand and we'll go through those line by line if, you know, you don't mind and you have the next hour and a half to do that. Or I can just skip and jump through to the reports at the end.
That might be better.
Okay. The end-of-year report is made up of a few schedules and really what this report is, is it's a report of our entire spending as a district, not just LEA money, chapter 70 money, but it's also grants, revolving, gifts, anything that you can think of is in this report and it's also money that is spent by the town on behalf of the school, insurances. In this report, we have Schedule 1 and 3, which is, one contains all of the budgets, all of the funds. Three is instructional. We have Schedule 4, which is special education, an overview of that by program. We have, like I said, I'm just kind of skimming the reports and then we'll go in more detail at the end. Schedule 7 is transportation. Schedule 19 is our next-year budget, so that would be the current budget that we're in now as we're working on FY '19 closeout. They've added, they have Schedule 18 now, which is more of a survey, looking at teacher costs, so they're creating a database on the state level of salaries and contracts and stuff like that. And then they've added a new report this year, an excess cost calculator for grant funding, for federal grant funding. So there is a lot of assistance. I don't do this alone, for certain. I have input from the town accountant. I can't thank Tim Bell enough for his collaboration and work together. I don't think there's a week go by that we don't talk on some point about everything, so I appreciate his assistance. And also Maria from special education, as I'm compiling this and putting things together, I'm reaching out to them saying, "What about this and how about that and this transportation?" So we're working through these things as a team and as a group and I appreciate all their help with it. I am going to lead you, which is the first place I go when I'm done with this report. If you head towards the back of the information that I've given you, you're going to see a report that says FY '19 spending. It starts with page one of eight. It's probably about 10 pages from the end.
It's actually page 44 of our document.
Got it. Does everybody find it okay?
Net school spending, correct?
Correct. So FY '19 net school spending. So as you know, we have to meet, we, there are requirements around net school spending and what we have to meet every year. So I like to start with the current year spending that we just finished, FY '19, and take a look at where we hit our net school spending. So if you look at the total column at the very end and you go down, you'll see our net school spending for FY '19 was $26,873,914. Our required net school spending was $23,346, so we're about 3.5 million over our net school spending, which is very good. That's where we want to be. If you're at net school spending, you're struggling, so that's a good place to be. If you turn the page and you look at FY '20, that's the current year we're in, that's our Schedule 19 numbers. Our net school spending is scheduled to be at $27,853 and we are required to hit $24,776, so we are about $3 million above tentatively right now about net school spending. That can change as money moves and things get reallocated, but we're in a good position there. If you go to the next page, typically, I'm not going to go through all of this, but you can see this page is revenue at the very top. It's revenue from local sources and then it gets into school committee expenditures, which are our LEA expenditures. So usually, I'll look at the right-hand column and go down and look for any changes that might jump out at me. And then, you know, if you, the one that would jump out right away is transportation, line 81. You can see, we paid $150,000 last year in transportation for the town. We haven't done that in the past, so it's 100% increase. So we look through those and go down and I just compare to make sure and double-check my numbers to make sure everything's okay. You'll see, if you look down the bottom, our tuitions, you know, private tuitions was up 10%, 1.3. Our collaboratives went down just a hair, so our tuitions did go up for FY '20.
Do you know why line 98 went up so high, tuition to mass public schools?
Yes, because we didn't have a tuition the year before. We had a student enrolled there, so we just had a small amount and then we had an actual full year's tuition.
But that's not, if I understand that line correctly, that's not a special ed out-of-district placement, correct?
No, it is.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
So it's only 59,000?
So it's the tuition that we're paying to another mass school for a special education.
Okay.
We actually had one student enrolled in a school that we were paying tuition for. And then if you look at the next page, city and town expenditures, go through, take a look at that. Retirement is always, retirement insurance, health insurance are always areas that I take a look at and go down. There was really nothing that alarming, everything is pretty standard. If you look down the bottom, where you see expenditures from grants and special funds, they're outlined there, those are things that any federal or state grant plus anything that is a special fund, which could be any of our donations, it could be athletic revolving, our before and after programming, all of that is down in there, in that area. Summarizes it. The next page, I'm not going to continue, but you'll see something that looks a little different. These are some of the things that we worked through. These two pages are actually the same page. There was an error in the spreadsheet this year when Department of Ed released it, so they have the wrong totals coming in the back one, so they sent us an individual spreadsheet and had us copy and paste our numbers in there and said, "Staple them together, you'll need it for the auditor when they come out to show that this is the corrected page." So that's why you have two similar pages. You'll see it says corrected at the top, end of year '18. All right. And then it just continues to go through our expenditures. I think everything was fine, it's submitted. We will have our auditors come out typically in January and February to do the audit and to go through that. And that's about, sums it up, unless you have any questions or any areas that you want to specifically look at.
Can you explain line 139?
Yes, school choice. We spent $100,000 last year in school choice. That was applied towards our tutors.
Our what?
Our ABA tutors. That was offset, our ABA tutors.
So that's the money that's paid out?
Correct.
For students that are school choicing to schools outside of Webster?
So we receive revenue for school choice, kids, that goes into a revolving fund and then we usually offset it with something, whether it's targeted ABA tuition lines in special education that was offset that, $100,000.
School choice money coming in.
Okay.
Well, it's money that we've received?
For students who are going to...
But it was money that was spent, correct me if I'm wrong, in our budget for ABAs?
Correct.
The funds came from the school choice revolving fund and it was used for ABA services?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Because the school choice money that we quote-unquote lose, it's kind of like we don't receive it. That makes sense? Does that make sense? I was looking at the exact, you asked my question, actually. I must have cheated off you.
Good question.
Any other questions or comments regarding the end of year report?
That concludes my report.
Again, thank you to you and your team and to Mr. Bell and everybody who I, you know, worked so diligently on putting this together. And is this the report that sometimes got delayed in the past?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
And I see that it's not this year.
It was two weeks. Thanks for putting that up.
No, 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 no. No, no, but two weeks is a lot.
No, sometimes this report was very delayed. Last year was the first time.
Trying to be a positive, make it a positive comment.
And I have no doubt that it would have been done on time had, you know, there were just a lot of things going down on the town side and.
I shouldn't have said anything. I was trying to make it positive because in the, in past, I remember your predecessor.
Yeah. Last year was the first year that we submitted it on time in probably the 10 years, if not more.
Right.
So this is still good. We, we were thrilled with it, so.
Yeah, Mr. McCarrick can go back longer than 10 years, but I can't.
Yeah.
Again, thank you very much. Continuing on with our agenda, the next item is principal report. Fran Thomas, Jr., Principal Bartlett High School. Good evening, Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Great.
I usually see Kathy and Sheila on the soccer field.
Every game.
Yeah. I'm going to go slightly out of order here and I'm going to talk about attendance tardy first before we get into the breakfast. So September, we're a little bit over 91% collectively for attendance. So that's, it's good, it's not great, but you know, it's good. And we're just below that for October year-to-date so far, about 90% right here. Been looking for overall trends to see if something stands out. We had that real windy day. The weather was nasty. That was probably like the worst weather day we've had so far. So I was kind of looking at that. We were at 90% for that day. So kids have been here, they were here on the half days. If you look at attendance and tardies, Mondays seem to be a problem for some of our kids. They, they like the four day week. But we're looking at our tardies. And when I started here, we talked about data, trying to get accurate data. So when you look at a day and say 52 kids are tardy, what we, what we're finding out is about 50% of those kids are between 7:26 and 7:36. So some of that is they park in the student parking lot because they want to get here for 7:25. They race over to the first door, it's locked. They come to the second one and now they're two or three minutes late. So, you know, that's not ideal, but that's not like a indicative of a problem. So what we're finding from this data is we want to focus on the nine to 10 kids who consistently arrive after eight or after nine and find out what's going on with them. So we've kind of narrowed it down. We, we have a system now where our kids log in on a Chromebook, it timestamps them, gets them moving. And like I said, five minutes late isn't ideal, but we have the long block first period. They're still getting their breakfast. They're still getting at least an hour of instruction during that long block. So it's, it's kind of like a nuisance thing, but I'm not really worried about that. I'm worried about the kids who like getting to school on time isn't a priority or they're not engaged enough to get in. So this kind of data allows us to focus on those kids, not only the tardy ones, but the attendance ones. We meet every Friday to discuss attendance, tidiness, issues, students at risk. So we do that every Friday. So this data is, is helping us a lot on that. Our breakfast program, we're doing about double what they did last year. It was, they were serving 60 to 70 meals per day. We're up to about 120, 125 daily now. Again, we're trying to track if there's a meal preference. That maybe will nudge some of those kids here earlier. So if there's like the hot egg sandwich and we see that there's more participation in those days, maybe we can kind of advertise it so some of those kids who are five minutes late and are missing out on that will get here a little bit earlier. We're just kind of track stuff. But Keftir folks are very pleased that we've got that type of participation. And I am too considering it's a new program, a new way that we're getting the kids served. Then the accelerated learning course at Nichols. Last year there were no students that took that. This year we have nine. So we're really happy that we've had that type of participation. But it kind of feeds into the discussion regarding dual enrollment opportunities. So, so far this month, I've met with Quinn Sigman, Community College. Today I met with Nichols. And Thursday I'm meeting with a gentleman, he's a private then for AET Labs. But they were instrumental in getting the innovative pathway started at Experity. So we're trying to figure out how we can expand opportunities for our kids to get on college campuses. So one target area is like college readiness. So we're trying to plan a fair for juniors this fall. Have a couple workshops and then do a, kind of like end of year thing in the spring. So that those kids, when they come back as seniors, you'll have a game plan of where they want to go, what they want to do and how the courses that take and fit into it. What I'm finding is discussing things with kids, they don't know how what they're doing now connects to anything beyond like, well, the course says I have to take four years of English, so I'm going to take four years of English. Like they have no idea how it fits together. And there's a lot of resources between Nichols and Quinn Sig and Quinnabog Valley, which is a field trip that we're going on. So we're, we're just in the early discussion phase, but it fits into what Dr. Gogan was learning in Florida and the Amokale Foundation and what we're talking about with the MSBA, the building renovation program and the career pathways. There's a great deal of willingness from these folks to work with us. Quinn Sig currently is working with seven schools from Worcester. They have about 250, 300 students that are involved in this, taking dual enrollment things. And some of those kids are graduating with 12 college credits in their belt. If they go on to Quinn Sig, some of those certificate programs are only 20 credits. So we looked at our AP numbers before and found like, that's really not translating into college credits or courses. So we can kind of expand that. Kids have an opportunity, they can, between mixing AP and dual enrollment. And Quinn Sig and Nichols both said, we'll be flexible. We will send people teach at your school, we'll get kids on campus. So it may involve some shifting of, of funding to get this done. But there's a willingness and they said, school committee wants us to come present to them. We'll be happy to do that anytime too. The other thing that I'd like to really try to emphasize is the first generation college kids. Get them on a campus so that they can see what it's all about and hopefully plant some seeds. So again, this is why I'm going to school this way because like, you know, you can't, well, this is important because you have MCAS. Like, yeah, thanks. You know, I was talking to one of the students at tardy. I was saying, hey, a little late this morning. Boy, I worked a nine and a half hour shift yesterday at McDonald's. Walked home from there. I had another young lady got off at 10 o'clock from Dunkin' Donuts, walked home from Dunkin' Donuts. So I mean, those types of kids, that resilience, if we can get them channeled in thinking, you know, I mean, there's just so much potential there. So we've talked about a lot of things and we're going to follow up to try to get some concrete steps. But I think it all aligns with everything that we're doing from a renovation standpoint, from the Amokale Foundation, things like that. And I've been, they, they, currently they have a couple of programs at Nichols already. There's a women's leadership program. We want to expand that to include some males. There's a pipeline readiness program. We want to expand that as well. And everyone recognizes that it's a kind of like an untapped. We want to continue with the accelerated learning program with the Nichols Honors Academy and those types of kids. But we've also got to kind of expand that so we get more kids on board. I think we've just got to do a better job of getting the kids to understand they're investing in themselves by what they're doing in school. And not every kid's going to want to go to college. But there's just like at Nichols, they were saying, this year they're, they're done early May and there's no one on campus. So like, if you want to come up and use our green room and get kids like exposed to stuff, but just have them like do some field trips, workshops up there. They, they're willing to send that, their kids down here to become mentors and things like that. So anything that we can do that sprout that with those kids, I'm up for. So I'd been talking to some of our kids about things and their eyes just kind of like open up like. So they're, like Nichols has criminal justice, they have hospitality, they have business, there's things like that. Quinn Sig opened my eyes because when we had our college fair, there were a bunch of students that like, it wasn't IT tech, ITT tech, but there was a place like that was a private, like automotive thing, like $40,000 a year. Like you could go to Quinn Sig for a fraction of that, the same thing in less time. But kids just don't know. So all our kids are on NAVIAs. They have interest inventory, so we have a lot of initial data. We got to kind of translate that into some actionable steps for those kids. Because I really want our kids to feel like what they're doing counts towards something. So we're going to try to start initially with junior college readiness for the junior class. And then kind of like leadership stuff for our freshman kids. And they will maintain it over the years, but we can adjust it as we go. But the plan right now is to do something this fall for the junior class, college readiness, a couple of workshops probably on our campus. And then in the spring, take them back to Nichols and kind of like get them with financial aid, advisors, counselors, things like that so that they can start to form a game plan. So when they come back in the fall, they'll at least have some ideas of what they want to do, what, what colleges offer those majors, things like that.
Any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm so happy. I am so happy. I just want to thank you for taking the initiative to make those connections because it is all kind of folding into place. You know, we have an obligation to open doors for kids. And Fran's taken a leadership role and is making those connections. So I do want to just let you know, Fran, that as a result of the Amokale trip, Representative Jo McKenna and I are making personal trips to a list of all the local, not just local businesses, to start to open the conversation about job shadowing, internships, to start to carve those pathways for kids. So I, I see great things in, in the future. And I want to thank you for really taking a lead on that. Tomorrow I am meeting with the Nichols Honors President to continue the conversation. So we're kind of tackling things from different angles. And it's exciting. And you know, the kids deserve that. So good job.
Any other questions or comments from the members? Although I'm not as animated as Dr. Gogan, I will say, Dr. Gogan, Dr. Gogan and probably two or three of her predecessors are very aware of my personal frustrations with a couple of the items that you just hit. And this is one of the most exciting presentations I've heard from the high school in quite a long time. And I'm, there's no doubt in my mind that you won't follow through. I'm just really hopeful that everything you just mentioned. Because being proactive with attendance and tardy obviously has been a major frustration of mine. And I know it's not easy. But to hear stories like these, you know, some of these kids that we have in our district are having to work nine or 10 hours at night just to support themselves as well as possibly their family.
Families, yeah.
We kind of forget what these kids have to struggle with sometimes. I'm really excited about working with kids when in their junior year. Because in the past, it's funny, someone I think and I just had this conversation recently. By the time kids are seniors, even if it's in the fall of their senior year, if kids have no idea either what they want to do or the type of school they can attend, or more importantly, the type of school they can afford, it's almost too late. So the fact that you and your team are doing this work in their junior year and maybe potentially in the future, late in the sophomore year, that's really exciting to me. Because as you know, some kids will get that assistance at home.
Right.
And those aren't the kids that you worry about. It's the kids that aren't getting that assistance and, and it may be they're the first ones in their family to go. It may be that for whatever reason, their family structure is not cohesive enough to help them through that process. So I'm really excited that you and your team are working on this, especially in their junior year and trying to come up with options that I think are affordable. You know, you don't have to go into $80,000 in debt.
Right.
In order to go to school. And to your point, school may be a four-year private college. It may be a four-year public university. And there's some phenomenal programs at Quinn Sig, whether they're associate programs, associate degrees of some of the certificates. So I'll try to, maybe next time I'll be as animated as Dr. Gogan, but this is.
I'm trying to contain myself right now. We, the, the ultimate goal is to actually have some career awareness already in middle school before kids are entering high school. And that's our vision. So that when you become a freshman, you sort of have a, a range of where you want to go and that we are providing those opportunities, hands-on opportunities for kids to try things out. And if we have business connections and we have job shadow days set up, kids will have those opportunities. But it does take a lot of work to reorganize our programming. And I think we are, we're getting there. We're getting there. Thank you, Fran.
Welcome. And I'm sure you will. I do ask that you please, sometimes, again, everybody gets busy. We hear, we hear about these initiatives early in the year and then we never hear of the outcomes. So if you can keep us up to date of, and also I love hearing from the kids. So if there are students towards the end of the school year that, you know, especially for instance juniors that are part of this new initiative and sometimes it's nerve wracking to come and talk to all these boring adults. But if they're willing, yeah, I'd love to hear from some of the kids to see if it was beneficial.
I, I think that could be arranged. If nine students are taking the, that, that's huge. Nine students are taking the programs over at Nichols, which they hadn't been, they could come and report out on that.
Yep. But I, so to David's point, I want to get like the, the junior class. Because like Logan said, there were, I think there were about 60 kids that took the PSATs. That might seem impressive if it was one class, but it's sophomores and juniors together.
Right.
You know, so that's, it's not. We need to take kind of like a look at and say, are we going to use this to, to gauge kind of who's AP ready? In which case you'd, you'd focus on the sophomores. If you want to get kids ready to take the SATs, you'd focus on the juniors. You know, but we've got to kind of like come to an agreement and push that. But I think my, my frustration, and I'm sure it's the same with yours, is at lunch, I'm walking around the kids and asking them, hey, what are you doing? Clock's ticking, June's coming. I don't know. I think I want to go to college. Like, well, have you taken your SATs? Have you taken like FAFSA? Have you done any of that stuff? Or, you know, I guess I'll take a gap year and then I'm like, you take a gap year, you're not coming. You know what I mean? You got to at least take something at Quinn Sig. But I mean, it's those conversations and watching the kids wander around at the college fair without like any idea. Or I seen a kid take a brochure from Hussin College. And I said, hey buddy, do you know where that is? Nope. Said it's Bangor, Maine. Like, oh, where's that? I'm like, well, look at the weather channel and see what the weather is for Canada. That's basically what you're there for until, you know. So, but I mean, just, it was almost like they saw a colorful brochure, so they picked it up without any plan. Or even the kids who like, who do school and no college and that kind of stuff say, well, I want to be a teacher, so I'm looking at Bridgewater State. And your wife and I are like, oh, did you walk right past Pittsburgh State? Like that's one of the best, but.
And she gets, she's a little invested in that school.
Yeah, but I mean, it, it's a great school for teachers. But without having like that kind of game plan, just kind of wandering around aimlessly and that, that's what happens in their, their senior year. So I want to try to get kids more educated on that process and then hopefully get them involved with college people, counselors. Like they said, we'll do mock interviews for, for stuff like that. You know, even if they're not interested in Nichols or whatever, we'll, we'll put our staff to work. It'll be a controlled environment. So I'm excited about the stuff we can do.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continuing with the agenda, we have nothing under old business. Under new business, the first item on the agenda is approval of out-of-state field trip Bartlett students to Quinnabog Valley Community College in Connecticut, which is directly related to this conversation that we just had. Mr. Shan and Mrs. Granger are requesting to take roughly 20 to 30 students to QVCC in Danielson on October 25th, which I think is this Friday. And I believe the intent of this field trip is to get them introduced to a community campus and what QVCC offers. Was there anything you wanted to add, Dr. Gogan?
No, I highly support this.
I was going to just, from a formality standpoint, I assume you approved it because our copy does not have your signature?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the field trip to QVCC as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes unanimously. And actually, in the footnote, I see QVCC will pay for the transportation. Thank you, QVCC. Next item on the agenda is the wellness policy ADF first reading. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. This wellness policy was put together by our school nurses the first year I was here. It was in draft form and we, it got left in the dust somehow. So we have actually recently updated it, looking at different laws. It's a policy, we do not have a wellness policy in our district. So we'd like you to consider this. We are proposing that we form a wellness council made of different representatives across the district that meets to implement the health and wellness policy inside of this plan and that we report back once a year to the school committee. If you take a look at it, it really is, some of the things that we're already doing, we just don't have it in a policy. A council, nutrition, food and allergy, policy guidelines, educational and other wellness policies and procedures. It's pretty comprehensive. I do want to thank the team, which included all of our nurses and our food director, Ms. Barris and myself, Mrs. Perangeli. And it is a first read. So any suggestions or?
Any questions or comments from the members? As you outlined, I was impressed with how thorough and well thought out the policy is as presented. And for those who may be watching, it is school committee policy. That, no pun intended, whenever a new policy or a revised policy is recommended, we do go through three readings. So tonight will be the first reading. Our next meeting will be the second reading. And changes can occur at any time per administration's recommendation to those of the members with the intent of approving the policy at the third meeting. So hearing no further questions or comments. Again, thank you and your team for putting this together. Next item on the agenda, approval of special town meeting article Bartlett High School feasibility study. As the members are aware, we do have a fun and exciting Bartlett High School School Building Committee. Matter of fact, there's several of us in this room at the moment that are on that committee. So for those that may not be aware, the first step for any school project funded by the MSBA is for the district to appoint a school building committee, which has been done. The first financial step in the process is to request money from the town to conduct a feasibility study. So the administration made a presentation to the school building committee. Their recommendation is that at a special town meeting, most likely to occur on January 13th, 2020, that the article that was given to us in our packet, the bond, the warrant, and most likely, the dollar amount that will be requested at that town meeting. Fair to say publicly?
Yeah.
Most likely will be a million dollars. It sounds like a significant amount of money, which it is. But after going through it with the Park Ave project, and I think Mr. McCarron would agree with me, it's a very extensive process to determine basically what are the options with regards to a potential renovation of Bartlett High School. So engineers and architects and project managers are hired to work with the school building committee to come up with those options. And then, once that process is complete, the school building committee comes up with a recommended option, comes to the school committee and that ultimately, potentially is what the town may approve at a future town meeting and ballot question, so.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Also, I think it's important to point out that we are reimbursed. Right now, our current rate is seventy-six point eight-four. They do reassess the rates again in January. So out of that million, the district will be reimbursed a big percentage of that funds, regardless of whether it passes or does not pass. We will be reimbursed for that feasibility portion. So I think it's important for the community to know that, even though that might seem like a big number. That's really not what it's costing the community.
Right. So the net cost most likely would be roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
To the town. But per state law, we have to approve the total amount as we did with the Park Ave project and they get reimbursed by the MSBA, assuming the town approves it and then the MSBA approves it. So what the committee is being asked tonight is to approve the town meeting article that was provided in our packet. Are there any questions or comments from the members? What is the desire of the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCarron?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Again, so then the step would be this thou gets sent to the Board of Selectmen for their discussion and potential approval. Assuming that occurs, then it will be added to the special town meeting. Most likely, to that will occur on January 13th, 2020. Hearing.
Begins.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Seems like yesterday, Mr. McCarron, that we started this at Park Ave, doesn't it? Hearing no other comments or questions from the members, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donations. One, school supplies from Webster Five. Two, books from Long Subaru. And three, piano and display case from Map Free.
We will be getting two display cases from Map Free.
Correction, two display cases. Did you want to give a little history?
I just want to say, in Webster Kindness Matters, I haven't said that in a while. But it's true, as you can see. We're continually getting supports from our community members. Today, I met with a community member, Jill St. Seer, and she's also helping us get gifts for our students for the holidays already in October. So we're very grateful for these donations. Our music teacher did go over and see the piano and was thrilled. We have a display case, two display cases coming that will be used for art, the art rooms, maybe even one here. And Subaru Long gave us a bunch of books. And Webster Five, school supplies for our students. We're very, very, very grateful.
Any questions or comments from the members? So is this invoice just to give an estimate of the dollar amount of the piano? It just, it says an appraisal for insurance claim.
They gave this to us. I'm not sure it's exactly what the piano's worth. I would think it was more to fix the piano, like little tiny repairs. Because I find it hard to believe that a piano is only worth a hundred and thirty-two dollars. That might be for tuning the piano.
Okay.
But our, Mr. Carney saw it and was thrilled.
If Mr. Carney's happy, we're all happy.
Yep.
Let me just, on behalf of the committee, again, thank Webster Five, Long Subaru and Map Free for once again being wonderful business partners and very generous in their donations. And we don't need a dollar amount, we just need to accept it as presented, correct?
Correct.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the donations from Webster Five for school supplies, Long Subaru for the books for Park Ave and the piano case and two display cases from Map Free as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is review transfer signing of bills, payroll and vouchers.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Blythe.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.